To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to Bourbon County Commission Meeting, June 17th, 5:30 PM. Approval Consent Agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, which is the minutes payroll and accounts payroll.
No second.
Got a motion, a second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Public comments.
Mr. Water. Got up on Father's Day. Road runs past me. I find a stop sign complete with the post laying there in my road. So I said, put said stop sign and post in my driveway there. This morning, I went for a country cruise. I go down here and by golly, they're replacing the stop sign. I tell the fellows, there's one down there and they're on it. That's what I'm saying. That's awesome. I mean, if you're on it that quick. Second portion is the crews on road and bridge has been out there and they've been mulling around me and they've done an outstanding job. And that's the only thing I have, Commissioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We do have good crews.
Mr. Joe Ludlum.
Joe, since you're new to our meeting, no, I'm sorry, you're on the agenda.
Yeah.
Oh, you're public comment.
He's public comment.
Go ahead, go ahead, go ahead. We do time it to five minutes and if you're not done, I'll look at each commissioner like I did last week and that can extend your time.
Okay. Hopefully, I'll finish before five minutes.
You're okay.
Okay. Gentlemen, I did leave you a letter last week. Hopefully, you've looked over that letter and I will publicly read this letter because I stand behind those comments and I think it's important that everyone hear those. Okay? Gentlemen, thank you for signing the agreements with the solar project. It is in the right place, removed from population centers and closed to multiple high transmission lines. Would county zoning have improved that process? I doubt it. The county will receive cash payments when the project begins construction. In fairness, those payments should be divided in the same manner as property taxes. Also, payments coming from the wind project should be distributed in the same manner. And I understand you guys are budgeted and those commitments may be made this year, but for 2025, I hope those adjustments will be made in that manner. Okay? There are two counties in eastern Kansas with significant property valuations, Lynn and Coffee. Both counties benefit greatly from electrical power generation. The 10-year tax abatement given by the state is frustrating, but in the future, Bourbon County too will greatly benefit financially from wind and solar development. And I think Mr. Eden last week explained some of the implications for his, his school district that probably will come if this solar development takes place. Okay? I urge you to disband any committee charged with investigation of setback distances for solar. The development agreements have already been signed and please read those development agreements you guys signed. The setbacks distances are specifically spelled out 25 feet. And I think it is with you, Jim, that 25 feet on the two quarter sections that I've got, if those are covered with solar panels, that's going to impact my family in the next 50-year period north of $200,000. Okay? So I'm not willing to give an inch unless it's for health benefits. And if it's for health benefits, then during the permitting process, the developer must work with at least nine regulatory agencies and that's spelled in the development contract you guys signed. One of those is the Kansas Department of Health and Environment and they can make any needed regulations at that point in time during that permitting process. If those things aren't safe, then I think I visit with Brandon and if they're not safe, then move them back. But they're on rooftops, they're in yards. I found out last week, they're on the high school roof in U234, saving that district $250,000 a year with LED lights. So the idea that they're not safe is, well, let the Department of Kansas Environment and Protection decide that. Okay? As for zoning, the city of Fort Scott is already zoned. That zoning authority extends three miles beyond the city limits in the absence of county zoning. Residents in smaller incorporated towns also control development in their jurisdictions. So the vast majority of the county residents already have significant control over new development. As a rural resident and a landowner, I am in the minority. I feel frightening to think that a popular vote might decide how I use my private property in rural Bourbon County. There are two ways for landowners to lose their private property, regulations and eminent domain. At least with eminent domain, fair market value is paid. With regulations, the value is just stolen. In conclusion, the solar agreement is signed, so the discussion should end. And please be careful with zoning, special use permits, and all other failed attempts to undermine individual private property rights. Okay? Thank you for considering my viewpoints and thank you for your service as County Commissioner. It's not easy for you guys.
It used to be one, you know.
Ah, yeah, I sat there from 87 to 91 and if I was had really good vision and insight, I would probably still be there, but at any rate, I appreciate that. Also, I will speak as a leaseholder on the economic benefits from this project for these. I was among 70 people that signed agreements with wind development and I'm again about 30 people that sign with solar development. Wind development, each one of those wind turbines out there is pulling about $15,000.
His time's up. You guys want to go on? That's normal. I ask you. Go ahead, go ahead, Joe.
Yeah. I'll try to finish shortly.
No, that's all right.
Okay.
It's just a standard of what we try to do.
I understand. Okay. Each one of those wind turbines are pulling about $15,000 for that property owner. When I was farming, I operated on a 15% margin. I had to sell $100,000 worth of cattle and grain to equal that kind of income. So those are significant benefits of those landowners. Solar development is different. We are paid on the panels that cover the acreage. We're paying on a per acre basis. If you get on internet, that rate varies from about $250 to $2,500 per acre. Now, I'm not going to tell you what I'm getting, but I will tell you that the property I've got leased is leased for pasture and hunting now. And if they put one panel on my property, it's going to, in one year, I'll collect what I would 10 years off of that other lease. And every acre they cover with those panels will equal to 25 years of the income I receive off the other. So as a property owner, it's much more valuable in my interest to sell electricity off of that property, which everybody uses, and to produce crops and livestock, which may well end up in China. So just, that's my viewpoint. Thank you for considering.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Hoyt. Can I have one minute off the clock? How about 45 seconds? I want to thank you guys for all the work you did on the hospital. The best thing that came out of that announcement on Thursday is we now know there's a plan. And we have a plan out in the open that I'm sure we're going to have numerous more discussions about, but at least we'll know what we're planning and what we're talking about when we didn't know before. So I'm 100% behind as long as we keep transparency and I'm with your plan.
Thank you.
Okay? That's off the clock. You can put me on now. Last week, I want to speak to Mr. Harris, Chairman Harris's comment about it was none of anybody's business and I agree. You know, I'm always here asking questions that I know you don't have the answer to, but I brought my high school diploma. I graduated in May of 1976. And do you know what year or where the 1976 Republican National Convention was? Closer than you think. It was in Kansas City. And I was on that floor in 1976. I worked for Burns Security and I was assigned to the Mississippi delegation, which they had done the calculations and the Mississippi vote was going to put Gerald Ford over the top to be our next presidential nominee. We know how that worked. Jimmy Carter, who I consider to this day the smartest man in the room when it comes to some subjects such as the Middle East and all the factions that went on conflict, he's the smartest man in the room. I spent the next couple of years getting my pilot slices and to prove that, I have my commercial pilot's license right here and I have a multi-engine instrument rating. And then I went to work for the FAA. And this is a collector's item. This is my official PATCO membership card. Now, if you don't know who PATCO is, it was a professional air traffic controllers organization who Ronald Reagan, this is the only union at the time when Ronald Reagan was first nominated for office in 80 that endorsed him. I registered to vote and the first president that I voted for was Ronald Reagan because he said he was going to do what we needed to be, have more modern equipment, better working conditions, et cetera. So I registered to vote as a Republican and voted for him. Eight months later, he fired me. I know what presidents I voted for after that, but it's nobody's business who I voted for. It's the beauty of our system. You go into that booth, you vote who you want for, want to vote for, and you don't have to tell anybody and it's nobody's business. Right here, this is my current Bourbon County voter registration card. Says right here, Republican. That's public knowledge. So this is everybody's business. I went to school and in 1996, I graduated from the University of Richmond. This is a copy of my diploma and that's my bachelor's degree. I also got a bachelor's degree in paralegal studies, then went to Par College, got a master's degree in public administration, and then went to Arizona State University and got a master's degree in law. That's not really anybody's business, but I want to share that with you so you could consider it in your future voting considerations. That's all I'll say. Thank you.
You got to offer me with that, Michael.
I just said voting consideration. That's mine. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Let's see, Mrs. Perry or Mary Pemberton, I don't, she's out in the hall or something, maybe? There she is.
Good evening, Mary.
Good evening. Last week, you guys may recall that you approved some firework permits.
I think so. Yeah, a couple of them.
Okay. That was done according to the public notice in the Saturday's newspaper as per Resolution 21-91, which states that the commissioners find it's in the best interests of the citizens of Bourbon County to require the sale and display of fireworks, I'm sorry, to regulate the sale and display of fireworks and the location of stands throughout the county. So this right here tells me that you're regulating certain types of businesses for public safety reasons. There's a lot more to the resolution, so. You have continually said you cannot regulate solar or wind developments. You're regulating one industry. Why do you think you can't regulate a different industry for the safety and well-being, health and welfare of citizens of the county? It also says that they have to put in applications and pay a fee with those applications.
Jennifer, is that a state statute, why we do that with the fireworks or do you know? I don't know.
I don't know if it's a state statute, but whenever I came in, that was.
It is, it's not. It's a county resolution.
Okay. I don't know if there's any statute that goes along with that.
Yeah. The state regulates the manufacture and the wholesale distribution, but the county regulates the local retail distribution. There's no retail state statutes.
I know the only rules I know about fireworks is when you want to set them off, like if you're licensed explosion expert for fireworks, whatever they call those guys, pyrotechnic. And they have to measure like where they're going to set them off from, from houses.
Yes, they are regulated by the state.
That's the only thing I know about what they regulate on fireworks. I don't know about our, I've never sold them, so I've never had to.
Okay. My point just is, this is a county resolution that is regulating an industry.
Can I ask you a question, please?
Yes.
Does those fireworks stands on private property intrude on the neighbor's property?
They may. I think that's why there's these statutes, why they were issued in the first place, the resolution.
My answer would be it's about property rights use. That's my only response I would give because I think, I don't think I'm a, no, I'm a large supporter of individual property rights and these people are choosing to put a firecracker stand on their personal property or something they've got leased. I think that's their right on personal property rights. Now, if they're doing something against their neighbor, the neighbor should take some kind of action.
Jennifer, do you know if the application permit that they receive and complete states a certain distance from smoking or anything whatsoever?
No. No, it's.
It just says you have to have a permit by the county to put up a fireworks stand. Nothing about where it could be or anything.
Where that stand is located.
Okay. So even a stronger point, in my opinion, you're regulating a particular industry for apparently no particular safety purpose, no specific regulations. So why can't you, by the same token, by a home rule resolution, ask for a permit for developers of solar or wind or whatever to get a permit so that you know who is here, maybe address a few issues with them early on, that type of thing?
My understanding that the direction we're possibly going with the request that you and some other gentleman made us going forward with the committee to look at setbacks and possibly work toward that application process once we had some rules and regulations. I don't think we ought to just throw out some regulations, say here they are. I think we ought to have some kind of plan.
I think so too. That's what I've been encouraged to.
You suggested a committee and we're doing that. So I think we're all moving forward with somewhat of your request.
I may have misunderstood then because I thought that you indicated that that committee, after it was formed, you indicated it was just for setbacks.
That's our initial.
And you've talked about the zoning, that you're looking at the zoning part.
The initial conversation that I'm aware of was for the setbacks. That's what. And my conversation with the property owners on the other side of the fence, that's a conversation I've had with them as well. I haven't found any tool yet to enforce that. It's just being a good neighbor, maybe. We hope. So I think before we talk about why we're not regulating something or regulating something, we've got to have something to regulate. Correct? And I don't think we have a home rule on a lot of stuff.
You can, you can have home rule, you have home rule powers for anything that is not regulated by the state that applies uniformly to all counties in the state.
Okay. Any questions, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Bourbon County Senior Citizens Budget.
Okay. Bourbon County Senior Citizen Budget. That's the end of the public comments. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm okay.
Good. Ms. Deb Meedle.
I appreciate the commission's support of Bourbon County Senior Citizens. This group is, are the Meals on Wheels and the Bourbon County Senior Citizens has been in effect since the mid-'70s and received funding through the county via, from what I can find, a mill levy that was voted in by the will of the people. So we have continued to enjoy that funding through the years. Last year, you opted to take the money that we were paying to S E K A A A for meal preparation and pay it directly to them. So when you look at, I think you have, do you have a copy of my budget sheet? I'd send it to Susan, but I didn't get it to her until today, so.
I don't have that myself.
Anyway, so that meant that our funding for the year was reduced from 45.6 to 25.8 because the difference in that amount of money is being paid directly to S E K A A for the food preparation. We are okay with that provided the quality of the food remains acceptable. If it should not, the fact that they're being paid direct can impact our ability to negotiate with someone else on, on meal preparation. But for now, it's working and we're fine. And so my request is that our funding remain the same for next year. I am searching for grants because we still have the one wall of the building, the upper portion on the northwest section that needs to be stabilized. So I've been working with some people and hopefully we'll get some grants. I just applied this last week for one of the Heartland community grants and so hopefully we can get that taken care of and get the building stabilized, so.
I appreciate all your hard work.
Well, thank you. We do a lot, I mean, last year I outlined pretty much in detail everything that we do. Our volunteers, we have about 150 hours average, probably a month, in volunteer help with the meals and also with the distribution of food commodities. So we do senior meal boxes. I believe there's 92 seniors that get those boxes on a monthly basis. And then we have about 150 families in the community, low income, who are receiving food commodities every other month. And so those are things that are considerable in helping low income and seniors in our community. And we also do still subsidize some transportation. It's down more than what it was, but we kind of anticipated that would happen and so that is, that is down. Community Connect, no. Compassionate Ministries also has an office in our building and they store quite a bit of stuff like diapers and formula and stuff like that. So, but we, we allow them space free of charge as a fellow for 501(c)(3).
Thank you.
Anyway, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Rob Harrington, please. Good evening, Rob.
Good evening, Commissioners. So I wanted to come today, now that we've had our announcement last week, I wanted to give kind of a overview of everything that went into this project because, you know, there's a lot of things being said that just aren't true and which is no surprise to me, but just want to do some clarifications on a few things, just so we know how and what went to get that announcement last Thursday. So we actually, in 2022, were in the process, actually, right around this time, June of 2022, we were in the process of working on trying to bring in legacy health care. And everyone knows that that process was done. What most people might not know is that at that same time, we were approached with a hurdle, that we were told that in order to keep our emergency room, we were going to have to do no, no rent. So we almost lost our emergency room in 2022, which would have put us a year and a half, almost two years now without an emergency room, but the, but at the time, the county commission at the time stepped up and said, yeah, took an even bigger cost of keeping that building open and withdrew the lease for the emergency room. That solidified an emergency room from June of 2022 to December of 2023 by just waiving the lease rate. A lot of people don't know that, but this commission stepped up and did what was right to make sure that you all had emergency healthcare for another year and a half past that point. Soon after, we also had to forego the lease rate for the clinic space that was there, which ended up to get the land back so we could control the helipad because we were not going to be able to get the helipad unless we gave free rent of $23,000 or so dollars a month, whatever it was. And so we had to give free rent to that as well. So when Legacy Health took control of the building in November of 2022, they were losing approximately $50,000 a month on that building. Now, a lot of people wanted to say that they were making off like bandits and they were stealing money or whatever from the county and not doing it, but in all honesty, they were losing $50,000 a month. Now, that would have been money that the county would have lost if we would not have pushed through and gave Legacy the building. Now, to put even more perspective into that, if you would have taken the money that the county had in ARPA funds and from Joplin, from Murphy, the hospital, the actual building and the ER would have had to shut down in October of 2023. That's when the county would have ran out of money to take care of that building. Because the county commission at that time and Ready and some others were able to work with Legacy to get them to come here and take the building on, we were able to not only keep the ER for another, emergency room for another two months when they closed in December, but we were also able to keep the building open and full, hence why S E K Mental Health is there, why their IM Rehab is still open, why the hairdresser is still there, and specifically why K R I is there. If we wouldn't have made those moves when we did, the hospital would have shut down in October of 2023 and nothing that is there today would be there currently. So again, the county commission at the time stepped up, worked with Legacy, got them the facility and was able to move forward on making sure that facility stayed open. Now, let's fast forward to, I would say, December of 2023, the end of November of 2023, and that's when Mr. Denning called my office and I asked about the facility. He was looking for a behavioral health facility and wanted to bring what is now K R I to the community. Now, that facility, we walked it several times in the month of December, myself and K R I. We talked specifically about the building, how we could do, what he wanted to do, what type of arrangements and corrections needed to be done to help with the building. Legacy was a part of those conversations as well. They were able to make some of the improvements. They were able to work together on an agreement with K R I. And hence, in January, we were able to announce the addition of Kansas Renewal Institute. Kansas Renewal Institute, as of today, has 60 new employees that are, make nurse wages and has been an asset to this community since they're come, since they came. They've added jobs. They've added jobs, they've added a needed, necessary. They've added jobs, they've added jobs, they've added a, a needed, necessary service to the state. And as of today, has a, a waiting list of over a hundred of adolescents that need care. Over a hundred kids of that need care. And so, and they're going to provide those services to those children. Now, what's interesting about that is that, you know, if you've heard anything I've said, the county's been, you know, we were able to work with Legacy so we could keep the ER open, Ascension so we could keep the ER open, Legacy so we could keep the building open. All those things took place over the last year and a half, two years, just so we could get to the point of last Thursday. Just so we could get back to having an emergency room, not, not a hospital like we have now. We have an acute care facility. And to be even more blunt about it, there are a lot of people, some that are in this room today, some that aren't in this room, some that are running for office today, that blatantly said it was a lie, that it wasn't going to happen, that it was false, that none of the things that we were working on, we were really working on. And I personally think those individuals should stand up and apologize for what they said on Facebook and on social media, especially to the gentleman sitting around this table and to Legacy and others who are involved because this whole time, we were working to try to get you, the community, an emergency room in a hospital. So, in January, Mr. Denning contacted me again and with Ready and said, hey, what, what about Freeman Healthcare Systems? Have you guys reached out to them? I said, yes, we've reached out to them multiple times, but with no success. He goes, well, I know them very well. Let's see if we can't get them back to the table. We were able to get them back to the table in early February. In February, we started discussions with them. The county commissioners, specifically Mr. Beth, sat at the table with them, members of the city commission and administration sat at the tables with them. And we talked about what we needed here in Bourbon County. Now, we had, we had other options, but let me tell you, the other options were emergency room, plain and simple, emergency room. It's all we were going to get, that's all they were going to give. Freeman came to us and said, we want to provide healthcare to Bourbon County. We want to give back to the county a hospital. And so, we decided to ride that horse to the end. And so, because of the work that Mr. Harris and Mr. Wiznahan, I'm sure you would have, if you would have been here this, over this whole time, but.
I would have been on board, had anybody talked to me at all about anything. I'd have been on the seat, so.
So, Mr. Beth and Mr. Harris clear up until this point have been instrumental in making sure that we have healthcare in this county. So has other individuals. The, the tax that passed was instrumental. We are appreciative to the committee that did, that worked on that tax. The city and the county have given a subsidy that was instrumental in getting them here. And then, to be completely honest with you, K R I was huge in getting them here because they're, they're taking a heavy lift. And they're going to have a lot of partnerships with Freeman to make sure that Freeman can stay here for the long haul and be an entity or be an organization within this community. And so, I just come up here because, you know, we announced it Thursday. And to be completely honest with you, I don't think it was ten minutes later and there are already negative comments. We, we can't have one day of good news in this town and it, it drives me crazy. But the facts are the facts. Freeman Healthcare announced they're coming. They did say probably April two thousand and twenty-five is when they'll be able to open their doors. That's, that's just how it goes. That's licensing with the federal government. And if you think trying to stop a solar farm is hard, try to convince the federal government to change laws because that's, that's, I mean, they can't agree on what they're going to eat for supper now. Federal laws, state laws, we've had the state fire marshal walk through that building three times in the last two months, three months, working with them on what we need to fix to get a license. We've been working hand in hand with CMS, which is Medicare, trying to figure out what we need to get a license. So, the work still continues. The, we're still completely involved in bringing healthcare back to this county. But I really felt like after the weekend, and I don't have Facebook, I, I don't get on it, it's, I choose not to. But all my friends and all, several people in this community were reaching out to me going, Rob, I mean, this is what they're saying, why, what's going on? I mean, this is ridiculous. And so, I said, you know what? I called and said, I want, I want on the agenda because I think it's time people knew the truth of everything and what's really happened. And so, you know, we were this close to being without anything. Because if, if we wouldn't have worked with Ascension, we would have lost an ER two years ago. If we wouldn't have found Legacy, if we wouldn't have done any of the things that we did prior to Legacy, that this commission voted on, the, the studies and all this, we wouldn't have got Legacy. If we wouldn't have got Legacy, we would have never been able to get K R I. And if we didn't get K R I, we would have never been able to get Freeman. And those are the facts. Without all the things that we did, Thursday wouldn't have happened, period. I've been in a lot of conversations. I was, I've talked to Advent, no. Ozark, or Ozark, Alatha Health, no. K U, no. Hard no's, straight out of the gate. Subsidy or not, no. Actually, Advent said they would come if we could guarantee them whatever they lost at the end of the year, which could be five million dollars.
Plus a profit.
Plus a profit. So, they wanted us to provide them with profit to come here and we didn't feel that was the best use of taxpayer money. All I'm saying is that before you get on and you pound the keys and you say what you think is to be true, it wouldn't hurt to maybe ask. Now, Commissioner Wiznahan said if he would have been told, he would have been behind it and I truly believe that. I will tell you one thing that Freeman did say. When we finally got to about March, mid-March, well, probably April, mid-April. They said if we spoke their name one time to anybody, they wouldn't come. So, if we would have ran out and told everybody Freeman's coming, we wouldn't have had Thursday. That's how projects go. People don't want you to know they're coming until they want you to know they're coming. And so, Thursday happened because of the hard work of a small group of people that, and honestly, have been taking a beating from a lot of you for six, seven, eight months and been called liars and frauds and whatever because you didn't think that this project was going to happen. And I'm not, I'm not, I, I'm standing up here just to tell you, I think you owe everybody that you said was lying and everything. I think you all owe them a big apology and a big thank you because in April of two thousand and twenty-five, you'll be able to go to a hospital once again in this county. And without their hard work, you wouldn't be. You'd be going to a hospital in Pittsburgh or a hospital in Kansas City or a hospital somewhere else. And so, I'm going to get off my soapbox now, but thank you.
Thank you, Rob.
Thank you so much for making sure if my kids get hurt, they have a place to go. And all those individuals have been shipped to other places. Thank you to your EMS staff for keeping them alive. Thank you for all the hard work that's went into this project. And again, thank you for, thank you for giving a damn enough to, to do what you did, so.
Thanks.
Okay. Jennifer Hawkins, county clerk.
All right, the first thing I have is a disaster relief application for Terry and Patricia West. This is for a barn that was destroyed by a tornado at their property at sixteen seventy-four hundred and fifteenth street. And that happened on April twenty-sixth of this year. So, they are asking for an abatement to remove that barn for the eight months of two thousand and twenty-four that it was not on their property.
Okay.
Okay. Make a motion to approve this abatement and the address is sixteen seventy-four hundred and fifteenth street, Red, Redfield, Kansas. So, Terry and Patricia West, they have a barn that was destroyed by a tornado.
I'll second it.
Okay. Got a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Committee letters.
Okay, so I'm going to present nine committee letters that were received in our office for the solar panel committee.
Justice is not here, should we open them, read them? Here, probably not, should we?
I don't know how it goes. This is my first go around with somebody asking to do something.
Since Justice is not here, let's just let you keep them and maybe we can.
Right, they did not state anything about opening publicly or anything.
You didn't, so, okay. I'm impressed we got nine, though.
Absolutely.
I'm impressed, so.
Yeah. A couple people called me and told me they was turning them in, so.
Yeah.
I was, I was glad to hear.
If you would keep those, we would schedule a work.
Do you want me to keep those?
Yes.
I can do that.
Schedule a work session.
Okay.
And talk about it.
Okay.
I'm impressed, though, nine.
The next thing I have is a title for two thousand and twelve Chevrolet ambulance. This is the unit that they are trading in for the ambulance that they were notified is ready. So, I just, if I could get the chairman to sign this, I'll put the pink tab there. And then, that way, they can provide that title once the unit is delivered.
We have to have a motion for this necessarily, but make a motion for Chairman Harris to sign the title for two thousand and twelve Chevy ambulance to be traded in on one that we ordered quite a while back.
I'll second it.
Got a motion in second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Thank you. Okay, so, the next thing I have is for the lease agreement for the Sandy mini excavator that you had previously approved Public Works to purchase. They are requesting a lot of signatures and a resolution allowing Chairman Harris to sign. So, I have every.
Why would we, we've never done a resolution to sign that, who's asking for that?
This is for lease service center, D B A N C L Government Capital.
That's a well-approved work, making this.
Yeah, we already approved making the purchase, so I just.
I don't know about that.
What did we vote on last week?
We didn't vote on this last week.
Two weeks ago.
We voted on it while he was on vacation.
Oh, I wasn't here, so.
He was on vacation.
Okay.
He was on vacation. We told him as long as it was in their budget, they could purchase it, it was in their budget, so.
You must do a lease purchase and go back after payment money, hopefully reimburse for using it and hopefully pay it off.
Finish paying it off.
Yeah, okay.
He was on vacation. Okay, so we need a motion to be assigned now, you got, we, we.
I'll make a motion that Jim, the chairman.
Sign the lease agreement.
Signs the lease agreement for the Sandy machine.
Second that.
Got a motion in second, any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All right, I'll slide those.
All right, so every yellow flag is.
You'll learn that you get to make motions multiple times on things, Brandon.
Right.
You know, for the same thing over and over. If you're here long enough, you get.
About twelve signatures.
Right, so you can get that back to me after the meeting, that's no problem, there's a lot, I know.
Okay.
The only other thing I had, Susan asked to remind you that next Monday from one to five-thirty, there's a budget work session with all department heads.
One thing about before, hang on a second, Jennifer, if you don't mind. You know, these committee letter, letters, I mean, it's a committee, it's a public committee, so.
Well, I don't know, that's, that's a good point.
I mean, you know, they, they know they were going to be a public committee, so.
We can open them and read them and see who they are.
I mean, I don't know, we, I mean, it's going to take a while to do nine, obviously, but, you know, I mean, we probably need to talk about how we're going to do that because otherwise, it'll sit there and we'll be back here the same, next week saying, well, we, what are we going to do with this?
I'm okay with having an executive session read through them and, and talk about them and then come out and make the public comment of who we chose to be on the.
Unlike the personnel, we can't go in.
Oh, we can't go in.
Oh, yeah, they can't because it, it's a public, I mean, they're a public committee, so, I, I mean, I think they have to be read in public, would be my opinion.
I'm open to anything, gentlemen, what are you going to do?
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm fine with.
I mean, or we can wait and let Justin tell us to. I mean, I'm fine with that, I don't care, but.
Yeah, I'd like to get it done next week, but that's, I mean, so, yeah, we can let, let the councilor tell us what we need to do with them.
Nice to get started on it, yeah.
As a public committee, they intended to be.
Public, right? I mean, that's kind of, yeah.
But what criteria are you, are you going to use to say, oh, this was okay and that was not okay? That may be the problem.
Yes, yeah, yeah, I agree, I agree. Well, we just have to, we would have to, I think, make a, make a list and say, well, I want X, Y, and A, B, C, D, E, F. And so, you do that same and you do the same and we see where they fall, I guess.
Yeah, kind of a check, look like you're interviewing somebody for a job.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I guess we, I mean, I, you know, I guess that's, I mean, I don't care. You get done.
Thank you.
Okay.
So, we're just going to wait till next week? I mean, it's fine with me, I don't care, but I mean, it's.
I don't care either way. I don't want a decision made until we prepare a.
Oh, we have to, we have to.
Yes, ma'am.
We have to read through them.
Why don't you just set a date and time for a special meeting to open them, like you said that you want to begin with? And then, the people that.
We can do that.
Letters can be there, you can get all.
Well, I think we do that next week then at the commission meeting.
Yeah, we'll just hit a commission meeting, we'll set aside thirty minutes where kind of a, these people can come in and we can ask questions.
If they want.
Public workshop, work meeting, work session, whatever you want to call it. Yes, Michael.
Is the budget meeting public?
From one to five-thirty?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, it'll be here.
Yes.
Yep.
So, keep it.
Except for.
Have a long meeting next Monday.
Yeah. Yeah, it'll be a long day.
Okay.
Thanks, Jennifer.
So, setting aside thirty minutes, I just want to make sure.
Yeah, I would just.
To put it on the agenda.
Set aside.
Yeah, we'll set aside thirty minutes.
Don't put, I, I wouldn't put a time down, I would just put it.
At, at the end of the meeting.
Okay.
And there, that way, we don't, we aren't stuck with something.
Now, we'll have to, someone's going to have to open them to invite people. We don't know who they are.
Well, okay, I will make a motion to allow Chairman Harris to open those to, and then can invite people because you.
We can contact and invite them to the meeting.
I mean, I, and I say, Brandon, unless you want to, but you, you work, right, in Alatha or something? So, I don't want you to have to make a special trip.
Yeah, no, I, yeah, I work up in the city Tuesday to Friday, so, yeah, we'll just do it on Monday and.
Motion for Commissioner Harris to open those letters and make invitations, dude, working with the county clerk.
And I second it.
Aye. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. I'm going to make myself note, but I'll forget.
There you go.
Okay, commission comments.
Um, I, I don't, I don't have any today. It's, I've been dealing with some personal stuff for the last four or five days, so.
Okay, Cliffing? Ryan, you're next, you're on.
What's that, you all right, Brandon? What, you're good?
Yeah, no, I'm good.
Okay.
We're good.
I have two items. And I would like to attend both of these meetings, not in any decision process making of any kind. The first one, the interim president of Forest County Community College has asked the county and the city to join her at a short meeting sometime, just discuss their roads inside their college. And we'd have to decide, number one, who they belong to, et cetera, a long list of things, but it's just a informational meeting. And if one of you wanted to go, that's fine, but she would like one of the commissioners and Eric to be there just to participate in this discussion. And I can go, the, the, the time hasn't been set yet, I haven't even answered her email yet. So, I don't mind going, but it's up to you two.
She'll probably do it on a day I can't go anyway, so.
I won't be making any decisions, I'll just be on a fact-finding mission and I'll report back to the commission what we talked about.
That's fine.
Okay. Second thing, I've been invited and either one of you is warm welcome to go. Senator Moran is holding a Kansas Financial Town Hall meeting in Shune on July the second. I have been invited to attend that meeting and be part of the panel. But again, if one of you other commissioners would like to go, I'm okay with that. But I've received it, Mr. John Hill and Brian Hope.
that Mr. John Hill and Brian Hope, the local banks will be there and actually conducting some of this meeting. And they would like to have a commissioner there representing Bourbon County. I don't, I don't mind going. I don't know what time it is yet. It's 10:30, July 2nd. Ah, there'd be no decision made by me or any type. It's just the, I'll be representing the commission as a fact finding. If I can share information about Bourbon County, I will. But I need you guys on a mission to go as commissioners.
I'm fine.
I'm fine, because I don't.
I will attend that meeting now. That's all I have.
So Monday, 1:00 to 5:30. I mean, that's official county business, is it not, Michael? Would you agree with that?
Well, we, we've in the past had budget work sessions where you discuss, you don't, but you can make a decision.
Yeah. Well, to make a motion that the three, the three commissioners potentially will be at a budget work session on Monday, this coming Monday, week from today, from 1:00 to 5:30 before the county commission meeting. No decisions will be made by us.
Yeah, yeah, I, I second that.
Got a motion and a second and further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Say 1:30.
It's 1:00 to 5:30.
I guess Jennifer said 1:00 to 5:30, right?
1:00 to 5:30.
Yeah.
I got further than here. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
We all make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen. With all the deer wrecks and everything.
Well, I think the state used to issue more damn licenses. That's how I think. So we can just perch the hell out of them. I'm sick and tired of hitting. I hit them at least once a year, but this one was a good one. Just hurt my lower back and checked it. I thought the car caught on fire because it knocked all the insulation in on the tire and started smoking. I was like, oh, shit, I'm going to die in the car or a fire.